I'm going to call the Economic Development and Planning Committee meeting to order. Today, we're doing it a little bit differently. We've got the Economic Development Team sitting up here. We have the committee down there. It's a lot easier for you guys to have a discussion back and forth, I think, than sitting up here at the dais. We also have Delta on a Zoom. And the first item of the committee we're going to do right now is a roll call, please.
Mrs. Root.
Here.
Mrs. Hanchett.
Here.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Curran. Mr. Havy.
Here.
Mr. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Ricky.
Here.
Mrs. Rickett Swales.
Here.
And Mr. Harris. Seven present, one absent.
Thank you. So the first item we're going to talk about, and I'm going to turn it over to Tim Boyd, we're going to talk about the update contract with Delta. And I think we have a presentation that is coming. And then after that, we're going to take a minute, and I'm going to turn it over to Kier, and he's going to talk about the marketing tourism plan just quick. So we have two items on the agenda today. Thank you. Mr. Boyd?
Good morning. Thank you. Want to welcome the folks on the Teams call from Delta Development. Will allow them an opportunity to introduce themselves and talk about their roles within the process that we have. Because we are doing Zoom, if you have questions, and in order for other folks to hear, if you have a question, you please, you definitely need to use your microphone. So make sure we do that. What we've asked Delta to provide us today is an overview of their achievements to date, kind of an annual report, and then also talk about some upcoming activities. So with that, I will turn it over to, normally it's Luke, but since Darren's here today, we'll start with Darren and let Darren provide the overview and go through the rest of the team. So, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Luke, and thank you for our team in terms of providing that introduction. Tim, I just wanted to ask, can we share our information that we sent?
You should be able to share it right from your screen.
Okay. Excellent. All right. So I'll introduce our team. I'm Darren Asper. I'm the Senior Vice President with Delta Development Group. I'm joined here today with Luke Gallion and William Lewis. And as Tim had mentioned, Dane Higbee's also part of our team, and he wasn't able to join us today. What I wanted to do is to provide a summary of our activity for 2023 and talk about what is coming up in 2024 with upcoming grant opportunities. As you can see on the agenda, we worked with five primary initiatives. And I think to summarize this, if we could go to a attachment A loop, that would be really helpful. And let's zoom that up a little bit. So what we have worked on is, the first initiative was the Allegheny County Outdoor Agricultural Community Space Improvements Project. This was an appropriations request that we submitted through Congressman Langworthy's office to the tune of $425,850. The current status of that appropriations is it's being considered by Congress in the upcoming spending bill, and they're going to take action on that by March 5. So the county has been very good in providing information to the congressman's office and providing update and the status of the county's initiatives in moving this project forward. In addition to that, one of the other appropriations requests that we submitted last year was through the CDBG Economic Development Initiatives appropriation to the tune of 1.25 million. That one did not move forward, but we are excited that the agricultural community project did. In addition to that, around July of last year, we submitted a statewide CFA application for a strategic planning and feasibility study for the County Comprehensive Sewer Study Project. That was a successful award for $100,000 and is part of your county sewer study project initiative. In addition to that, we worked with the county to provide grant applications for the Appalachian Regional Commission IIJA funding for the comprehensive sewer project and also the Gateway Waterline Extension and Storage Tank Initiative. Those are going through Washington DC. They're pending at this time. We're optimistic that both of those will be approved. So you have a $560,000 comprehensive sewer study project and a $740,000 Gateway Waterline Extension and Storage Tank project. So those were the five initiatives and grant applications that we worked on over the past year. We also talked to the project team about other initiatives, other opportunities for the county to consider during 2023. I want to talk a little bit about initiatives for 2024. If we could zoom in on that. We have worked with county staff to position the county to consider federal appropriations requests for county priorities. We have a few of those listed on the top of the federal funding opportunities. We have the Historic Bridge Project that we plan to submit as part of a community project funding through Congressman Langworthy's office and the Senator's office. We anticipate asking for between $1 and $2 million. There's a match requirement of 20%. And we anticipate that federal appropriations process opening up later this month and with a due date of April. In addition to that, we're also going to request funding for the Gateway Waterline Extension and Sewer Treatment Facility Project, as well as the Cultural Center Project through the sewer funding accounts and economic development accounts. In addition to that, we've been talking to the county about potential funding through rural facilities at the federal level for the DPW Project and Transit Hub, and look at some of those initiatives related to that project. We've also listed some other potential rural funding, or federal funding for initiatives. There's the Community Change Grant Project through EPA. There's a regional initiative potentially with RISE. And there's also the Power Brand Application through the Appalachian Regional Commission, which is now open for project considerations. So those are some of the fate federal funding opportunities. If we look at the state, there's a whole list of opportunities for the county to consider. And it ranges from everything related to the CFA grant that is due at the end of July for sewer and water projects. There's funding for tourism through the same CFA process. And there's also Main Street opportunities for consideration. So what we plan to do in 2024 is to work with the county to identify key initiatives, not only for the federal projects, but also the state initiatives. So that's a little bit of a summary in terms of projects and initiatives that we've been working on. We've had bi-weekly status calls with the project team, monthly updates. We provided information to the county in terms of communications with the federal offices, and we provided coordination in terms of submitting grants and providing follow-up with those grant opportunities. So that's a little bit about some of the initiatives that we're looking at, the activity that we put together, and the upcoming grant opportunities. At this time, I would turn it back over to Tim to facilitate any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you, Darren, and thank you, your team, for all the work that you've done on our behalf. You certainly put forth a great deal of effort to move some of these projects forward and researching the potential options we have for next year. So I'm not sure what questions the committee may have moving forward on some of the items that were discussed. John?
Yes, on the 2023 projects, the last two, the ARC IIJA funding, what's the date when we're going to hear on that, or is there a date to hear whether we got?
Yes, for the ARC IIJA projects, that is currently being reviewed in Washington DC by ARC. In terms of when we're going to officially hear about that, I would say sometime later this spring.
Okay. Thank you. And one other thing, are we open to other projects? You got a list of stuff. If we come up with something mid-year, you, are we?
Yes, we're certainly open to that. I know in working with Tim and the project team, they've come to the committee with projects. So if there are other initiatives, we can discuss those and see what funding sources may be appropriate.
Thank you.
I think from the standpoint of looking at additional projects as we move forward, with the list that you've given us, if there's anything that would fall into that category, timing is key for some of these funding pieces. So we need to make sure that we're on cycle with our requests. So if there's something that may come up that needs to be delayed to the next funding cycle, we can put that on the to-do list for '25. But, you know, certainly if there's something that comes in in the cycle that we can get in, and you need a little lead time for that. Sorry. Brooke?
Yes, sir.
No, you're not on.
There we go. Darren, thanks. I'm admitting a lack of familiarity with our contract, but with some of these applications, when they come, when and if they come through, how much of the administrative work of the grant after award will you guys be picking up, or how much should we be preparing ourselves internally to administer some of these outside funds?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think in terms of the funding, we can take the lead in terms of the project administration. But what I would say, Brooke, is where the administration involves, like a day-to-day relationship with, working with an engineering firm, I would say, you know, your staff is capable of doing that, and we can provide support.
Okay. I guess maybe one of my primary concerns would be with assuring that we're complying with, you know, reporting requirements, you know, stuff on that end that, you know, historically, we haven't really had the staffing to do adequately.
Yeah, and I would say, Brooke, that with the ARC application, since that may not be a program that the county has worked with that much, we have a lot of experience doing that, and we would certainly be able to assist the county under this proposed contract to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions today for Delta, or about any of these projects, or about moving ahead with any of these?
I got one more to have. I'm sorry. Some of our legislators have gotten just kind of casual questions from municipalities. They're familiar with the work you've been doing, and I think we've been, you know, complimentary to the municipalities about our relationship, and they're wondering, I think, how much they could potentially have access to your services. What's the best answer for them? Is it, you know, my personal opinion is, you know, it's a county contract, and we want your focus to be on county projects. But as you know, with some of the stuff, particularly up at Gateway, a lot of our goals are intermunicipal. So how do you see that? Would you, you know, would you be willing to just let us pass people off to you if there's a municipality that has, you know, some funding they're seeking? Could they contract with you separately? How would you see that working?
Yeah, that's a great question, Brooke. I think we've done a great job over the last year as a team, working with you, to keep a pretty tight list of county initiatives. I know there's other downtown initiatives, other town initiatives in the county, and I would say that we could contract separately with them, or if the county sees it as a partnership where they provide some funding for our services, and the municipality or town provides the other part of that, then we can work like that. The one thing we should be careful of is to make sure that a county initiative doesn't compete directly with a town initiative for the same source of funding. So that's where we need to coordinate.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow up on that discussion and maybe ask Kier, but I would think through the planning and the planning board is where the towns could have a lot of input, and Kier would have some oversight in helping with that initiative with towns and the county.
In the past, we have assisted towns and villages with technical aspects, and sometimes been able to assist them with finding a grant writer that's appropriate for a particular project, for the best deal, for the buck. And some of those have been successful over the years. And so we already, if somebody calls us, we already offer those services and try to track down what grants might be appropriate. And if they ask for technical assistance, we try to hook them up with the right, act as a matchmaker, basically, with a firm.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any questions here today about the Delta initiatives that we have listed? Any questions about moving forward, working with them? No?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you describe the changes from the previous contract to this contract?
I'm going to let Mr. Boyd do that.
Really, the change in the contract is just an increase in the fee, which would be moving from, I think, sorry, I don't have that in front of me.
Seven to seventy-five?
From $7,000 to $7,500 on a monthly basis. As you can see, what we get from this, we have a number of individuals that are on this call. We have those folks at our disposal. It certainly affords us a better opportunity to look at these grant submissions, that the cost of this contract is substantially less than what it would cost us to hire one individual to do some of the grant writing and the activities. And what we get is a good return on our investment, just based on some of these projects that we're looking at currently. We probably have a substantial increase. I don't know what the percentage would be, but we would be looking at that increase for this year. Again, I think it's money well spent, and it's still the same services that we have and a good background from the standpoint of what's out there and available, looking at a clearinghouse, if you will, for grant opportunities. So it really doesn't change the scope of services that we receive, but there is a slight increase in the fee, so.
Mr. Healy, I'm waiting for you to make a comment, but I'm going to say it before you do, but I think I know what you're going to say. I think this is an investment. Is that what you were going to say?
And do we make it right now, or are we going to? Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Mike makes a motion to update and renew, and Steve Havy seconded it. Is there any further discussion on this contract in motion? If not, I'll ask for a vote.
We have some, we probably have some procedural pieces that we need to go through that I will look to Allison, too.
Oh, so we can't make a motion today?
No. So this is, right, so this is only advertised as a work session today. So this would have to be, so Mr. Boyd will have to bring this to, with an MOE, to a committee on the 21st.
Well, we have the approval to move the MOE forward, so we'll bring it forward, and it should not be an issue on the 21st.
Right. And I've already, right, and I've already reviewed the amendment and have no issues with this, so this should proceed. We could do a resolution on the 29th. So if he brings it to committee on the second, on the committee, if he brings it to the P and 20, on the 21st, we can have a resolution prepared to go to the full board on the 29th, because we've discussed it.
So that motion was just in support of that action?
Okay. Well, let's just show our hands and straw vote of who's in favor of moving ahead with this contract, so we can bring it. Okay. Thank you. All right. And thank you to the fellows at Delta for the presentation and zooming in with us today, and you'll be hearing back from us later this month.
Thank you very much. It's been a great year to work with the county, and we look forward to 2024.
And Darren and Luke, I will be in touch with you. I know we have to follow up on some of the other items here, so we can get that together with our team. But again, thank you very much for your assistance throughout the year.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over right now to Kier. Kier gave us a tourism marketing plan at the last meeting. He wants to just touch base with you, give you a little update, and tell you about moving forward into 2025.
Right.
For?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. It's all yours, Kier.
Thank you. So last month, for those who were in attendance, I had provided you a paper copy. I brought more and distributed them to those who are in attendance today, the same program. This is the 2024 marketing plan for tourism. Historically, we have not handed out a document this nice-looking, but we were encouraged to get this together, and we have had this information all along, just not in such a lovely format. The first six sections of the document are overview information, and I'm not going to dwell on those. If you have any questions on those, feel free to ask. I would move to Section 7, which is approximately halfway back, right after the brand messaging, where it says tactics and execution. This is really the meat of the document, and when you go to the chart, the first chart, where it says current execution, that's referring to the 2023 projects and where we were during that time, and then future is for 2024, or in some cases, beyond 2024, where we recognize that we have things that we need to do, and we may not have funding for it, we still put it in there so that we can go after that funding in the future. So I love New York breaks up their grant applications and all their reporting according to these basic categories along the left side, you see. And so that's why we followed that. So we, last year, we did radio for about three months in the fall. We did some ads. This year, we would like to start that in a couple of months and run through the summer months, basically. Print is the big ticket item, and then digital ad campaigns is a very big ticket item. That's the one you just approved for Hearst Media. So there's discussion all through here of what these all mean. The map of the distributors, I did not provide that last month, but now I can show you better where we are covering with the distributors that you've already approved. Future markets are basically any of the adjacent areas to those that I wish we had the money and the copies of the guide to send them, but currently, we do not have the money for distribution, nor do we have enough guides to provide. Typically, each distributor asks for somewhere between 3,000 and 6,000 copies. So, you know, you can do the math pretty quick. If you want to cover a new area, you need at least 3,000 copies and another couple of thousand dollars each time you expand your area. There are a few other firms that we've been in talks with on and off over the years. There's one that covers all through the Adirondacks, Catskills, Hudson Valley. We are not currently working with them. They also cover Toronto, Niagara Falls, Hamilton, that area. That would be a future goal, would be to be able to distribute in those areas. Working our way through the next chart, website design, SEO, social media presence, and social media user and influencer content. The last one there is the, an interesting one, where somebody comes in and they tour around and they produce materials. We get copies of those materials. So like last year, we received photography, as well as video, from a content creator, but then they also pushed it to their networks, and we got a pretty good response from our first foray into that world. So we'd like to do a couple more of those.
Just, I think it relates to those two. So when I travel, a lot of times I'll do like, you know, the best five hikes in Raleigh-Durham or whatever, which is, I know, not really a survey that people have voted on, but all marketing. Do you, is there a big cost involved in those kinds of things, or is that just something that like a web designer or a social media person would come up with?
So it works lots of different ways. The one we had last year, it was a set fee. They came in, they didn't want to meet with anybody official, they didn't meet with us. They wanted to sort of go undercover and see what their experience was. And then they provided us all the materials, as well as doing their own posts. So that's sort of the experience we had. I think there's other opportunities out there, different flavors. I think there's other opportunities out there, different flavors, and the pricing is probably all over the place. I thought it was a relatively reasonable fee last year, especially because of the photography. Our photography gallery is pretty thin and we really need to get more up-to-date stuff. And so this is an opportunity to have somebody who knows how to do it and get live, real photography and video back. So I thought it was a good deal for last year. Moving on, the other tactics, newsletters. We have not really been doing the newsletter. We'd like to start that, so that's reflected there. Press releases, we, we recognize that our local press is challenging. I'll just leave it at that. But we, we do think that we need to run at least quarterly press releases related to tourism. We, we still continue to try to attend some of the local events and those are noted in the future execution. And we participate in the Chicago-Alagany Program and attend usually four or five interstate and big events with them. We're doing some distribution through Anderson's. That's a new program this year you approved. And Anderson's is going to all the, taking our brochure to all those different places, Montreal, Philadelphia, Central New York, York, PA, Toronto, Allentown Fair, the Great New York State Fair, a Fall RV Fest, I can't remember which town that's in, and the largest RV show, I believe that's up in Syracuse also. So they're, for nominal fee, they're taking our guides out to all these events so that we're covered. And pretty much the last set of tactics, Cataragus-Alagany Region, Fresh Air Adventures, Explore Genesee Valley, I Love New York in Nostia, there's discussion there. These are, have been ongoing programs for decades except for the, the Fresh Air ones the last three years, which, by the way, Fresh Air Adventures is our premier method of getting requests. That's four counties and they, that, they do a lot of work for us. They do blogs, they do website work, they push our events, they take requests, so they've been excellent. And then the last is the spending plan for 2024. This is based on what I Love New York gave us, what the county's match of that program is, and then what the county's non-matching funds are allocated to. So this gives you a feel for how we intend to spend our funds for 2024. So in speaking with the chair earlier this week, we agreed that really the time for you to see this and have true comment isn't so much now because we're already engaged and running down the highway. The best time would be to talk about 2025 and what are priorities sometime in May-June because we're expected to submit our budget request to the county administrator's office in July typically. So we, we need your input and which things you're interested in supporting more, and all that discussions should happen May-June so that we can properly set that up, which would also make it much easier to apply for the grant in typically December because we'd have all that stuff set up. So we'd know what the county was interested in sporting and go from there. And technically, this committee is the Tourism Promotion Agency for the county. So this would give you an opportunity to really participate in the process much better if we can put that on the calendar.
Thank you, Kier. And does anyone have any questions at this point?
Yeah, I have a question. How much of these expenses, we put 7.5 million aside, we used a little of that now. How much of these expenses can come out of that pot that we've designated for these purposes, actually?
For tourism?
Yes.
I'm going to say zero of that, seven point that we set aside came, is going towards tourism? Am I correct?
The, the 7.5 was for economic development.
This is tourism, right? I mean...
For tourism. The monies that you saw here in this, I believe none of that money that we set aside for economic development has gone to this marketing plan for tourism. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Yes. It's, it's I Love New York money and then there is some county money, which was how much match, we have a match, but then we have some non...
You have ninety, so the match is 50,000, 51,000, and then the county non-match is $96,500, down from about 120-something last year.
Dwight, is your question, the 7.5 million that was earmarked for economic development activities, is how, you want to, have we used any of that money? We, we have not. That's really more in the realm of what we might be able to do, infrastructure and other pieces, to attract and then to build. I, I think that comes in kind of our other discussion with Camoin and, and other folks of that strategic plan that we have. So if I understood your question right, so. If I could piggyback on that, the plan submission, that will also, and that, that kind of piggybacks on to the Delta discussion because Delta also has their, their, their fingers in the pie for areas that might be used for, we might be able to apply for state and/or federal funding for tourism expansion and development. So having this plan will then help us to help them identify areas we could go after for additional funding.
If I could comment on that, there's many other programs and tools and services that we could and probably should be considering, which I'm going to be compiling them all into something and try to put together a cohesive plan to expand the tourism effort that is not put together yet. But that, there are so many things that our county could be doing if we believe that tourism is a worthwhile investment to draw visitors and inspire them to spend their dough here and enjoy our things that we have, then we want to seriously consider all these other opportunities. But right now, I just don't have that available for you to review, so that's not part of this package.
Any other discussion on this, questions? Mike, and then Jen.
Just a comment, all tourism isn't equal, though, as far as the revenue it, it brings into the area too. So I, I think we want to keep that in mind, that we want to concentrate on those things are, are, are best for us on all, all fronts. The, and I think communication is always very important, as we talked about earlier with our local governments, to make sure that we're complementing each other and not, not duplicating our efforts. We should be working with those local government entities on those fronts. Thank you.
Yep, good point. Jen?
I'm on the page with the little ATV and the skier, and I'm just curious, it says most visited attractions, and there's a yellow arrow. Is that hunting and fishing spots, is that pointing to that because that's the most common one or is there any information? Okay.
No, that was just the way the graphic, the graphic was to get your eye to go from most visited attractions up in that general direction.
Is there any information on, I'm sure we have it. Are these in order or are these just randomly placed? Okay. And then, so one of my thoughts was ages of people who attend, do we have any information on that? Because I go back to like looking at your budget, I guess my question is, we put a lot into mailing and into paper advertising, it looks like, and I'm not sure, like people my age, I think, use that, but I don't know that younger generations are using that. And so I guess my question is, like, who comes here more, older people, younger people? And how are they using what we give them? You know, is it, is it used in a way that is helping us, I guess? And I don't know that you know the answer to that, but I'm just asking that question in general.
Well, you may recall last summer, Tim showed you a demo of a data set, a data service, where they actually captured where your phone is going and they can give you that kind of information. It's a costly service. We continue to look for maybe a slightly less costly one. That's the kind of data, though, that drives a lot of this. If you, and it would help if we had that kind of information, but currently, we don't have the funds to pay $30,000 for that data. So that was along the lines of why I was interested in trying out the Air DNA program because we will get some of that, at least, who goes to those sites.
Kier, you do gleam some of that information from website travel. I know that's not exactly the same, but that gives you a little bit of that data too. And I think one of the constrictions sometimes with the funding that we get is there's limits on what you can use it for and sometimes not always the best way to market. You know, they have certain categories that we have the funds to do it in, so that's, can be frustrating.
So I, you know, I, I wasn't going to say anything, but another point on this is when you look at the dollars for print material and the distribution of that, that's probably your, your, a large portion of the money. You can do the same reach with social media for a far less, but the reach could even be larger. But it's just the nature of the beast, beast when you go to printing, that is probably going to be your largest proportion.
I was just thinking about when I was in Alaska, and I mean, there were times when there were print media everywhere, but we looked everything up on our phones, so.
Yep, yep, so. Mike?
Just, I think we want to keep in mind too that our target population, and like I said, we got to look at it as an investment, and we want to target the population, maybe even, that's going to be the biggest return, maybe in attracting, through tourism, attracting industry here, which we need, need badly, and also encouraging people that do come and visit and their families to maybe want to settle here and, and add to the local communities.
Steve?
Piggybacking off what Mike just said, I just want to repeat something that I had heard a while back that I've always kept, that tourism is the first date of economic development. And going over to what Jen said, I just want to ask, down the road, I know we can't afford it now probably, but as our, our spending shifts, any thought about a phone app?
We have, we have tried that in the past. I think that the vast majority of folks use Google rather than a separate app. And I, I think putting things onto Google and making sure that they pop when somebody searches is a good effort. And the issue is that most of the offerings we have are not controlled by us. They are controlled by either a private person, company, or a volunteer group. So one of the things that would be in that big pile that I was talking about would be assisting those local businesses, cultural groups, to improve their social media, their website presence, and the product that they're offering. And I think that's really probably one of the most important things that, for economic development, for tourism, the fact that you can't find a lot of things on the web that are here because it's just not being applied to. So I'd like to work on that program.
A lot of them don't have any website to go to, even if you get them to go to it, it's a problem. Even, even when I travel, as you well know, you try to find places, sometimes they have no website, all they send you to is a Facebook page, and it's like, well, that's not what I wanted.
No, I agree. I, I think that if we invest in the social and web presence of what we have available, that that's probably better than an app. Thank you.
Okay. So I want to thank everybody today for this good discussion. Thank you, Kier, for that. Thank you, Tim, for bringing the Delta. You've got one more thing?
We had talked about working with counties that have established an EDO or an EDA as part of the recommendation that came out of the Camoin Study. I did reach out to three counties that have that model. They have all offered to Zoom with us and talk about their experiences with that. So three counties, what we'd like to do is, is look to schedule possibly a, a couple of work sessions that we could Zoom in and have them talk about their experiences. We could ask questions, looking to do that. I think with three counties, we could probably do two in one day, one in a next. So if we were looking at like a Tuesday to do two counties, followed with a morning meeting that would not interfere with a cow, that we could do sometime in March, looking to try and get something scheduled, and I can reach out to them if these dates work for you, looking either March 5 or 6, or the 19th and 20th of March. So if we could look to, to see if we could get a, a work session for, for P and D to talk about their experiences with an overarching economic development organization or authority, whether we go A or O, O or A, I'm not sure, but still focusing on economic development. So if those dates work, I will try to firm up and coordinate our schedules with, make sure we don't get into a cow or something like that, so. Nineteen, twenty, so.
Does anybody have a preference on those or, and do you think we can make them work? Before we go to them and ask them, we would...
We could do it in the morning of a board day.
Do you think, we didn't know if we could get all three of them in in the morning? So we thought we probably needed another day? If you're, you're going to go about probably an hour and a half with each one of them?
Part of the difficulty with March is, is my schedule, so that's, yeah, so.
Okay. So we got two people right now who can't do the 19th. We could, we don't, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday. I mean, we could do it on the 20th in the morning and then maybe do the other two on the Thursday, the 21st. Well...
Oh, you're good.
Okay, so then we're not going to try to schedule around you, Fred. The fifth and sixth? You want to see if we can do it? I know it's a short time for them, but, and we don't want to push it out there too far either because time is, time is a ticking and we're moving down the road. So we can Zoom you in maybe, Fred, you're going to be gone. Okay, fifth and sixth, perfect. We'll try and see what we can do for the fifth and the sixth then. All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order today before we adjourn this work session? I don't think we need a motion, so, yep.
Kier, is your office going to look for people for the summer again, like you did last year or no?
We did that two years ago where we had the, we tried to have, technically, they were called office aides. We call them the ambassadors. We, at that time, we had only one person apply and then it turned out they were busy every single time that we needed them until one event. So it kind of felt like that didn't work out very well, unfortunately. So it kind of felt like that didn't work out very well, unfortunately. We still, we always encourage legislators or other volunteers who might be interested, but the paid position, I don't think we're going to try to do.
And as Kier noted, later in the year, May-June, we will be talking about the tourism marketing plan as a work session with all the input from everybody at that point, so. If there's nothing else, then I guess I will adjourn this work session. Thank you.